Okay, if we can stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for my nation under God, indivisible, limited and just for all. Good evening, everyone. Hello. Welcome back again as we keep plunking along on our budget. I want to remind everyone that I don't think tonight will be a long meeting. You can get upset with me about that. But I want to remind everyone that our next budget workshop is Monday, 6:30. So we'll keep the 6:30s going for Monday. I think after tonight, we'll be in a pretty good place to have a very good conversation on Monday, maybe get into some deeper, specific questions. And if I dare say, maybe vote on something Monday. Let's see how that discussion goes. Alan, if you want to caucus, I'm going to try to caucus and we'll have a conversation, too. All right? But I don't see any big red flags if I can, if I dare right now, so.
Yeah.
If I dare say that, but I may eat those words, but especially after Paul talks tonight, so. So with that, I'll move on to the next thing. Any signups? Anyone here for public participation? Any public participation on the budget? Hearing none, we'll move forward with our budget workshop. And Paul, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Before Paul, before Paul, just before you go.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
We've got some more questions in, over the past couple of days. Thank you. We also tried to capture a couple that were brought up at the last meeting that we weren't sure if we got, you know, total clarity on it. So those are at, those are at your desk.
Got them.
If anybody has any questions, we talk about them tonight or Monday night.
Paul, using the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to thank Mike Crowley for his creative flair that he added, too. Otherwise, this would have been black and white. I'm dying right now. So, good evening, everyone. So, talking about the proposed 2526 budget, before I start off, I just want to make a blanket statement here that we're not just about computers and networks. We handle everything soup to nuts here, whether that be security systems, communication systems, besides phones. We do, for example, all the PA systems at all the schools. We handle all of the public safety for the town and all of the computers in the cars, as well as their complex, secure network. All the audiovisual, you know, like Bob runs here and across the entire district and town, all the meeting rooms and things like that, the Zoom meetings, so on and so forth. So with that in mind, just keep that in the back of your head because we service 16 different locations in town. We're not just Board of Ed, we're Board of Ed and Town. And with the 16 locations between the schools and all the town locations, we are stretched very thin. Also, the unknown's coming up. For example, new technologies and AI is a huge thing. You know, we're trying to get our head around what that's going to look like moving forward. The requested budget increase equals $66,000, 66,474, and roughly 45% of that increase is due to increased costs for software and services as they relate to our population. So these are kind of costs we can't control. So software renewals went up 5.77%, which is a 27.6% chunk of the budget. Technical services increased 8.12%, and that is 18.25% of the budget. And then photocopy equipment has also increased, however, that's 12% of the budget, overall budget. So again, software and technical services, those are directly related to student population. So these are, these are costs that I can't do anything about. Regarding the photocopy equipment, this is kind of a true-up, if you will. We had removed most of the printers from the classrooms right around COVID time, which allowed us to reduce our toner budget from $65,000, roughly down to $40,000, then $20,000, and I think now we're hovering right around $15,000. So it's been a significant cost savings over the last couple of years. The hope was, and using unfortunately COVID years as an example, so I didn't really have great data because obviously we were remote learning for a while, the hope was, was that we had relied so heavily on remote learning that there wouldn't really be a need to print. However, between FERPA requests, FOI requests, and the like, that produces a lot of printing, and people still print. The good news is, is that when they print, they have to go to a copier, and they have to badge in. So the days of walking around and seeing stacks of uncollected papers sitting on top of printers are a thing of the past. And I get a monthly report that shows me how many print jobs were sent and then abandoned, which means we didn't print it. And if we don't print it, we didn't pay for it. So the management of this is pretty good. However, we've seen an uptick in the, in the number of print jobs that are being done. I'm hoping we come well under next year's budget. The copier contract is up for renewal for next year, and I'll be working with the administration and the town on that renewal. One of the things that we're going to be looking at, though, is not replacing every single copier. If the copier does not have high mileage on it, then we'll buy it out for a dollar, and then we'll own it, and we'll only pay the usage and not the lease fee. So we should pick up some savings there. For example, the copier in my office is now 10 years old, and I'm going to keep it for another five. That's how much I love it. So I've never, I don't even know if I've ever replaced a toner cartridge in it, but it gets used. I use a scanner, and we do print to it, so. Any questions before I move on?
Paul said on black and white, right? No color, or you have to opt-in the color?
By default, it's set to black and white, yes. And we only have a few color copiers throughout the district. So not, we have more black and white than we do color.
Oh, good question.
Yes.
You're printing most of your FERPA, not the LI requests, instead of sending them electronic, or, you know, really?
Some, some of this stuff requires us to print it.
Because what has to be redacted, right? Right, so we, we need to charge for that, the maximum allowed. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that is, and then some. It's a lot.
I agree. One of the things that we've done in looking at this is we, going forward, we're handling requests now. We will take the data, dump it to what's called a PST, which is a mail file, and then we can share that mail file out with the request, or they can open it in Outlook, and then they can pick and choose what they want to print, instead of just dumping the entire PDF. We've had, we've had FERPA and FOI requests that literally break our copy equipment because it's thousands of pages.
Or they can just say, no, we're going to send it to a PDF.
Can we just not off it?
Well, that's.
You can redact that electronically.
Can you redact it?
I don't know. It depends on whether Adobe.
Yeah.
Guys, one discussion, please. One discussion, that's okay. And we all like to chip in, but let's just.
You just redact it electronically?
No, no.
Chad Point, he's asking if he could redact it electronically.
It can be done.
Yeah, you can.
Depends on which version of Adobe you have.
Yes, yes, it does. You need the full version of Adobe, which we have. Sometimes, though, doing it electronically is very tedious versus just being able to go, you know, and there's no right answer.
And sometimes that has to go to our attorney?
Yep.
Oh, for yourself, all of it? Right.
They ask for hard copies, so.
Right, and it has to be done by an administrator. So FOI requests are very time-consuming, very costly, and that's why we need to charge the maximum allowed by law for that.
Absolutely.
Well, the other thing is, too.
They want paper, they're going to have to pay for it.
Even, some of these e-discoveries get so large that I can't even email them. That's another problem, too.
I was just thinking that. Some of them, I mean, there's no way you're going to email those. No way.
Yeah, it varies. But again, I think moving forward, doing it through the PST way of doing it, dumping it to a mailbox, and then allowing them to pick and choose will certainly help save paper, trees, time, money.
It's more eco-friendly, too.
Yeah, absolutely. Listen, I'm completely paperless. It's, remember, it killed me to even have to print this out.
I'm going to screen black and white.
Absolutely. I'm not paying for color. You want color, look at the screen. But yeah, no, I mean, seriously, I mean, I used to, every year, with processing invoices and things of the like, have binders that were literally reams of paper thick. And for what? I mean, now, I, that's, I use my copier in the office pretty much as a scanner, primarily. Any invoices that get sent to me are typically electronic now, and if they're not, I scan them, and then they get sent off to be paid.
Chrissy, do you guys do your FERPA requests electronically? How do you redact?
Through the software.
We do a thumb-dive, too, you know, if it's too big to email.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's technical solutions on that.
Do you?
I don't know. I don't know how they do it. Luckily, a lot, I don't know.
Listen, when I, when I get a call from Sheila, because a lot of the stuff comes from Sheila or Jen, Jen doesn't ask how I'm doing, but Sheila will say, how are you doing? And I'll say.
Usually, I say, don't kill me, bud.
Right, right. I know it's always bad, but Sheila, it's always, you know, I don't know, it could be, could go either way. And so the answer is, depends on what you're going to say during this call, what the request is. So.
Four o'clock on a Friday afternoon.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I would be thinking Jen would say, when are you doing, not how are you doing?
Right, right, exactly. All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns about the noteworthy increases here on these lines?
You said you're tracking everything, everybody has to use their scanners, any major offenders? Since you have so much administrative time to check that.
That's genuine. Very established.
You mean, who prints the most?
Talk department, not individuals?
Yeah, no, I can't really, I can't really say that. There's just a lot of volume. It's just a lot of volume. I can't, trust me, if there was somebody that was abusing it, and if there was somebody, you know, printing neighborhood flyers for their, or, you know, flyers for their private, you know, clubs or something, I would know that, and trust me, I would absolutely pick up the phone and say, so I'll send the bill, too, and go from there. But yeah, I, again, I know the number is large, but I really am trying to, I'm very optimistic that we'll come in below that number for the photocopy. All right, moving on. I can't say it gets better, it only gets worse. In my budget, I've also requested two full-time positions. Some background on this, I've been here since 2010, and in the, in that time since 2010, the department has lost two part-time employees and two full-time employees. We had two part-time, like, afternoon technicians that would run around, and then we lost the department secretary, which you're now looking at. And we lost the IT manager, which was me, before I became the director. So we never backfilled that position. So that said, I spend a lot of my day doing a lot of administrative functions and e-discoveries, which again, I don't mind, but the problem is, is that I also get a lot of alerts from the federal government, the state, our local Demis region, the Department of Homeland Security. I get inundated, and thankfully, like, when Sheila will get, sometimes it's duplicate, but I told Sheila, I'd always rather see something duplicate than not see it at all. But I just get inundated with a ton of cyber threat emails all the time. And these are all boltens and alerts because it just doesn't end. So I'm doing that, hat, and managing a department and a small team of technicians that, I can't stress this enough, you guys are lucky, we have the best IT department anywhere. These guys are all over everything. They, they just, they get it done. But it's, it's really starting to take a toll, and I know it's taken a toll for me because I just can't keep up with, with everything. So the first request is for a technician two slash cybersecurity analyst, and this person will be the point of contact for a lot of these emails, and the focus will be on reading and digesting all of these alerts and reports. Every morning, I get about a half dozen reports that are produced by our systems internally, and they're, they're basically snapshots of our network. So that if something in the overnight happened, or looked awry, or somebody logged into something they shouldn't have, or there's a new profile on a server that shouldn't be there, I know about it first thing in the morning. That's how proactive we are. You know, but again, are there times, I walk in, I want to read that, that thing, but now I have a phone call, or I get an email, or, and now it's not till 10, 11, 12 o'clock, you know, in the afternoon, that I'm looking, finally looking at that report? Yeah, sometimes that happens. And I hate that because, and everybody in the department gets that report, so there is more than just me looking at it, but it's not really their job. I hope they look at the reports every morning. Certainly, I share everything that I get with the staff, but I need somebody that's going to be hyper-focused on the cybersecurity. So this technician two slash cybersecurity analyst will take a lead role in the cybersecurity initiatives that we have in the department, and they're going to be monitoring all the threats and the insights and the alerts as they relate to our enterprise network, and that means both Board of Ed and Town, everything, everywhere. And this person will report to both the network administrator and myself, because obviously we need that cohesion. If we have a network threat, the network administrator needs to, needs to know that. Any questions or comments, excuse me, on this slide?
Paul, both of these positions are being split with the town?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
That was my question. Thank you.
Yep. Absolutely, that's a great question. Yeah, both, both of these are 50/50.
We know, we know are 50, but knowing the town just took over St. Jude's, and that's going to be another site if it isn't a red.
That'll be number 17.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that incorporated in there, books sales already? I mean, we can't plan for the unknown too much, but we know we have the building, the town has the building.
The town, right.
Right, so.
I would, I would assume as the phases get, get approved, then the infrastructure of IT will be included in that, I would hope. We only approved phase one out of, out of five phases.
Right, but each phase.
So I would hope as each phase.
Taking his time.
No, I understand. I'm just hoping financially, as I'll say it loud, I just hope financially, as we approve the different stages, IT monies are put into that.
Right.
To get it done.
Well, I'll tell you what, if they don't give me the money I need to at least connect the building, they're not going to, they're not going to be able to use it for much.
That's, that's my point. That's why I was.
And no, and I have to say, on the town side, I mean, I've been in touch with, obviously, the First Selectment and Public Works, and we're getting a plan together to, to do just that, to get it connected. So, so that is moving forward. The second position would be a technician one slash inventory specialist. Again, the technician one piece of it would support townwide and inventory, not only for the Board of Ed, but also for the town, too, because we need to know what we have on our network. You know, and we have tools that we use now that give us a really good snapshot of what is connected to our network. But I need, I need eyes on that all the time. And with the going to one-to-one, we've had a lot of, lot of moving parts with that. And I, you know, so far, we've had a couple of bumps in the road, but nothing major. It's, it's gone really well, the one-to-one program so far. And I'm looking forward to really getting this thing going, you know, year over year and grade over grade. So I think it's, it's going to be a huge benefit to, to everybody involved, but it is a lot of work on IT's part to keep track of, you know, 75,000-plus dollars' worth of Chromebooks, just Chromebooks, not, not even everything else. So this is the, the additional request with that.
That would be purchase order control as well as vendor control? You're managing the vendors, this person would be?
I do, no, I do that.
Okay.
I do that.
He's going to help you with ordering?
Nope, I do that, too.
Okay. Well, let's get into a little more sculpted. He's going to do inventory control of the items, of the assets we have?
Yes.
Okay. Townwide, whatever.
Yep.
Okay. All right. You going to get any relief from this?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Right now, a lot, so right now, the systems administrator is doing a lot of this tracking of Chromebooks and the automated forms that we have, and, you know, you know, Greg, we took your Chromebook because it was broken, now we fixed it, Dennis, we gave it to you, now, there's a lot, a lot of moving parts that we need to keep track of and keep the inventory straight. And right now, that's falling upon my systems administrator, which means he's not getting his work done.
So just tracking, like, the insurance for the people.
Insurance?
The Chromebooks.
Who, who the device is assigned to?
Right.
And verifying, because we have to do an audit, probably late April, early May, we're going to do an audit. We're going to run reports. And my systems administrator, Mike, and he's done a great job in scripting a lot of this stuff, where he's actually written software that will go into Google, pull inventory reports, I mean, it makes my head spin. But he is literally spending day after day on this. And this is definitely something that, you know, he, he does a lot of the backend stuff, and like I said, the programming, but it's really not a good use of his time, making sure that, Dennis, you have your Chromebook? Okay, you know, that's, so.
Do you anticipate either one of these will be hard to fill?
Um, no, I don't. I believe that we can fill them in-house, which would then vacate. So if I take my current technician one and promote him into this position, and it's a slight bump in pay, but give him this additional responsibility, that will now open up a tech one position. So we'll backfill that. The tech two position that I currently have, I believe that that person would absolutely do a wonderful job focusing just on the cyber. We'll take that tech two, move him to tech two slash cybersecurity analyst, but we're not going to leave a tech two position open, because you can't, you can't bring somebody from the outside in as a tech two. You have to kind of build up to that. So we'll backfill that with a secondary tech one. So there'll be, so there'll be a little bit of offset of savings, you know, that way, with, you know, the hires that would replace the, you know, the vacant positions would be, would be lower.
Oh, God. Given that lag, you talk about six-month lag, getting one through two, or, because maybe it's got budgetary impact if you're not putting the entire route in. If you're only hiring for a year for six months at a two, but six months at a one, did you factor that into your request?
I'm not sure I understand.
If you're hiring a tech one to replace that?
Yeah.
To become the tech two. The tech one starts as a tech one, gets trained up to become a tech two, what's that lag time? How much time is that?
It's really, there's, there's nothing set in stone. It's really going to be based on their performance, how they do, have they taken on extra responsibility that would, you know?
I get that, but for this purpose, for this budget, you budgeted for the tech two for the whole year?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to know, what's in the finances?
Yeah, no, no. Fight, yeah.
You said it'll phase up.
Right.
Economically, it's straight in, just so you know. It's right through two. Assuming that person's going to train quickly and get through two-scar salary versus a one.
So in the actual spreadsheet that we have, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, because you had worked with me on this with the allocation, the tech, if, if these positions get approved, the existing tech two position becomes a tech two cyber.
Right.
Okay?
With a bump.
Right, so a bump, right. But there is no more tech two. There's now two tech ones.
Okay. But one of those tech ones will fill the tech two void eventually?
Yes, eventually, I mean.
So in the finances, Ron, I guess it's in your questions, do we put in for a tech two at this point, or is it a tech one? The second position.
No, it's a tech one.
It's a tech two, right?
No, it's a tech one.
Two tech ones with room for growth.
Right, right, exactly.
So we will get a bump eventually?
Someday.
Eventually, if needed and warranted. I mean, I, you know, again, you know, it really depends on what's going on, what, what the budgets are, obviously, as well.
Well, that's, that's the point I'm taking.
Yeah.
It's all budget, budgetary, right?
Yeah, exactly.
If you think that tech one's going to be a tech two this year, we should budget.
No, no, definitely not.
In the future.
I mean, technology's always evolving, right? I mean, it could be three years.
No, I won't spring that on you, I promise.
Keep you honest.
Yeah. At this point, that's, believe it or not, that's, that's all I have as far as requests, I know, you know, nice and easy. But, you know, again, I, I just want to stress it, you know, obviously, we're a necessary evil, I guess is a not-so-nice way of saying it, but this isn't going away.
The best way of saying it, you weren't in the news this morning.
Right.
The power is going to stop, so you're doing a good job.
Well, yeah, we weren't in the news because, you know, they haven't listed everybody, so.
Any other questions for Paul? I want to move on, obviously.
I have a question just around, like, inventory management. What software do we have for that inventory management?
So we use a platform, and it's a great platform, it's called Landsweeper.
Okay.
Landsweeper not only scans our network for all of our devices, when we have multiple servers out there that scan different segments and buildings and stuff, it also runs our entire help desk, which is great. You know, so users can send an email to help desk, and we get a ticket, the user gets a ticket number, and they get the email communication back and forth, so it's really, it's a great
Any other questions for Paul? No? Paul, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, come on down.
What's up? Oh, I hope not. Good, you?
Good.
And I won't hide it, but these are color copies. Sorry. Maybe printed from home.
They have to charge his department.
All right, so normally, we start off with the numbers, but tonight, we're not going to do that. We'll save it for a little bit. So just a little information first. So the key factors influencing proposed budget is increasing costs of materials and services, basically inflation. So a good example of that is currently, we're changing a circulator pump and motor assembly at Stepney Elementary. And we did one previously in '21. The cost just for the part, the pump and the motor assembly at that time was just over $4,000. This year's price is over $7,000. So a huge jump in a lot of these parts, and, you know, it's becoming a problem. Growing number of students and staff, so, you know, more kids, more dirt. And, you know, if you think about staff, too, when we increase staff, it's not just the cost of adding a staff member. They need a home, they need an office, they need a, you know, a classroom. It's creating that. So for our department, it could be new circuits, you know, add heating to an area that wasn't previously heated, fire protection, so all that comes into play. So, you know, when we add students and staff, it definitely makes a difference. The age of the buildings, as we all know, doing the facility study, we all know they're old, and as they get older, repairs increase. And then federal and state mandates as well. So some budget history. So '22, '23, facilities had a 4.1% increase. '23, '24, a .7%. '23, '24, a .7 increase. In this current year budget, we did a zero increase, but then incurred a further reduction of $75,000, which brought us down to a, I can't see that from here. I think it's 5.8, right? A negative 5.8. So anyway, the total change in dollars over that period of time is $66,000. And I should, I should say, the saving grace to that, right? You'd say, well, you know, how do we stay at this decent level with those numbers? It's been the surplus at the end of, you know, each year we've been lucky enough to have, but we all know we shouldn't be basing a budget on a hopes of a surplus. Largest impact areas for the facility budget, so this is where we're looking to put the money. We want to bring the emergency budget back and restore that back to where it was and add 70,000. Heating repairs to go up 23, air conditioning to go up 22.5, ground maintenance 20, building repairs 10, and custodial supplies 7. And I think there's one more there, maintenance supplies for 6. Okay, and the numbers. So that brings us to, with restoring the emergency fund where it was, brings it up to a 13.8 or 168.818. If you were to take that emergency budget section out, that was the further reduction, it's about an 8% overall increase. Pretty quick. So there you go.
Explain the problem as by taking out the 70,000, Dan. That 70,000 is emergency funds.
Yeah, so out of 70, yeah, our total emergency budget was 95. So truthfully, we took 75 out of it. I'm replacing it with 70 right now, but, so this year, we're running on 20,000. And we're halfway through the fiscal year, and I'm in the negative on that line.
Right, we're already, because it's emergency, things you can't anticipate.
Exactly.
Dan, the boiler at Jackie Hollow?
Boiler at Jackie Hollow. There's two boilers at Jackie Hollow for that building, and one of them will be back up and running tomorrow, but, you know, had a major breakdown this week, so that's, that I haven't gotten the bill yet, but I'm probably just going to be under, I'm going to guess it's going to be around 15,000 for that repair, that one repair alone. We also lost the furnace in the fieldhouse down on the football field, so that was another 5,800. So those things you just can't foresee, and at some point, when things age out, you know, you have to weigh out, how many times are you going to throw repair money at it compared to what you're going to budget and finally replace it, you know?
Well, many of us were on the tours of the schools.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You didn't bring up on O.L. either.
Please.
Yeah. I don't want to keep you here too long. Any other questions? Okay, so then we'll move on to capital. So for this year in capital, we have Atmastic to upgrade the pool heating system for 100,000, replace the stadium bleachers at 250,000. You'll see the stadium video board there with an asterisk, they're funding to be determined. So I think that's where that sits. Jackie Hollow, thank God, right? We just said, repaired that same boiler this week. So on the capital budget is new boilers and burners for Jackie Hollow. And they're, they're original, so you're looking at 26 years old now. Stepney to pave the parking lot for 350, and Fawn Hollow's looking to complete paint job for the gym ceiling walls at 35.
Anything with the floors in Fawn Hollow?
Uh, for the gym?
Yeah.
That is somewhere on here. Just give me a second.
What's at the gym floor?
Gym floor to be replaced in '28, '29.
Okay. It's just pointed out on the tours.
Yeah.
Thank you, Larry.
Dan, the paving at Stepney, does that include the U in the front?
It should be everything, and realistically, I'm sure Ashy would love to expand the parking there. So who knows? Maybe we're going to have to do, Joe, a traffic assessment when the time comes and see what the best layout would be, and see if we could, you know, help the traffic pattern as well while you're doing that project.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this. The reason for my question is, with the facility study, if we put on that addition across the U, would we be then ripping up this, or would that be minimal?
It's very possible. So I think some of these large projects, depending on what the facility study holds, you're really going to have to play that as you get the information and then adjust these to, you know, those needs, instead of wasting that money.
And if our timeline holds true, and facilities, May, June, comes up with a plan, then we'll know before next fiscal year how to run the Stepney parking lot.
Yeah, because it all...
Am I saying that right?
Yes, because it's all got to go through bonding and all that anyway.
Yes, yeah.
You're right. Yeah, yeah. Okay, next question. The Jackie Hollow HVAC, air conditioning.
Yes.
There's a lot of state grants out right now for shovel-ready projects that we're missing.
Mm-hmm.
What would be your timeline? Is it possible to put it in for next year? HVAC at, at Jackie Hollow's an issue.
For a long time.
They skied on it 25 years ago. It was probably 100 grand, now it's a million-ish. But could we bump that up a year with our ask in capital and get it project ready so we can get some state grants on this?
So then you're asking for actual shovel and ground start as of when?
For the '26, '27, so you're saying move it up a year in this? Or you're saying move it up to next year?
I, I would like to move it up to '25, '26. It's an issue.
Do you have to give us some grants?
I mean, it, it's a, you know, it's a student issue, it's a staff issue, it's, it's a labor issue, it's, you know, how do we...
It's a grant accessible.
So I, I think you have...
It's grants, I don't want to lose the grant.
You have a great point. What we need the definition of is what the state and federal government says is shovel-ready. So Jackie Hollow, if I remember, has, has the duck work already, yes? In parts of it?
It has duck work, but...
No, I'm just...
Yeah, so it has duck work, it has air handlers, right?
So that's my...
Is that a shovel?
So if we get to shovel-ready, and shovel-ready means it has to have air handlers or duck units, and we're already shovel, so that's my point. I want to know what shovel-ready means for Dan and for me.
It also means the Town has approved it and all that. Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
It's already gone to a Town meeting.
Okay. That helps, so thank you.
And that process could be, that, that could be half a year.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we use it.
So that's why I, my recommendation to this board, and we'll talk about it more on Monday, is to bump that up. But while we have Dan here, I don't want to do something if Dan says no, that, that would be impossible.
The only thing I will say, it's a, it's a big hurdle, and this is why. You need to have an engineer come out and assess what's currently there. So the infrastructure, the way the, you know, roof was trussed and the amount of weight it can hold, it has to be engineered to find out, can it support the extra weight that the air conditioning condensers are now going to make? Your electrical, is the current power system at Jackie Hollow capable of taking on air conditioning throughout that building now? All those duck work, size could be different.
Oh, yeah.
Even though it's duck work there, right? Your size of your duck work could be different, and it needs to be insulated, right? Because you're going to have condensation, and you have dripping duck work throughout that whole building causing mold issues.
Does it bring up stuff too, like the generator to run it? I mean, is there a generator and there's a power outage? Doesn't this, this implication go?
Yeah, the generator doesn't run though, the air handlers. The generator's only sized large enough to maintain certain aspects of the building for emergencies.
Yeah, the safety lights.
Yeah, you're not getting air conditioning if the power goes out.
That's an expense for engineers to come in and do that.
There's an expense to that, there's a timeframe to that, right? That assessment has to be done first.
Right, so could that be added to this budget, is what we're asking?
That assessment, sure, anything can be. Tell me where you want to put it.
We're just moving the page.
Yeah, hey. But yeah, I mean, it is a little more involved, I think, than Joe saying, hey, let's put air conditioning. There's a lot of prep, but, you know, the earlier we start, the earlier you get it, so...
Let me ask you, oh, sorry, go ahead, Chrissy.
I was just going to ask that, are the grants secure? Like, if we did this, are we definitely getting that grant?
No.
Or is there, are we taking a gamble that we put it in our budget and we might end up having to fund it if we don't get it?
That's part of the shovel-ready, right, Joe, is it?
Yeah.
The Town has to say, we're doing this, it's been budgeted, it's been approved. The grant money would reimburse us if we get a grant.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's a lot of money out there.
It's something I'd want to talk to, talk to Tony about.
So we're fighting like, I think, it would be a big gamble.
We have to front it, yeah, no doubt.
I think that's something to think inside.
Yeah. Would it make, would it make sense then to put into capital for '25, '26, the assessment?
Yeah, the engineering aspect.
The engineering aspect.
Sure, that's what I'm saying.
The prep work.
Yep, move that up if you'd like, get at least that prepped, get that work done, and then know which direction...
So could you get us that rough number?
Sure.
So that at least we're taking slow steps to that, and we won't have all of it at one time.
Yep. No problem.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do you want to talk about the board? Because I know, no, we both have that question, so I didn't know, if you want the board. Yeah, not us, not us, the board, the video board.
Yeah, and we intentionally wanted to make sure that was clear there, because that's why the asterisk's there, it says funding source to be determined, because I think we would be looking at trying to raise the funds for it and not looking to go to the Town for it. There's wants and there's needs. This is pretty clearly a want. It's not necessarily...
Because that would be our, that's our HVAC study.
Yeah.
It's not in it to be there.
Well, I like to pursue other sponsorships for that. I love the idea, I just, I just really want to pursue sponsorship.
Yeah.
Can you explain quickly, Dan, the upgrades to the heating system of the pool?
I was just going to go there.
Okay. Yeah, so currently, the, there's a boiler specifically for domestic water and to heat the pool in the boiler room, which is over here.
You walked us through it. We were with you as you walked us through it.
Pumping them next to each other.
Right. Yeah, exactly. And, and the pool is over here. So giant pump to send that, yeah, to send that hot water down, go through the heat exchanger and, and, you know, heat the water. So way more efficient to put a localized unit in the pool area that's just for the pool. So, yeah, just a big benefit by doing that in itself. Also, during our renovation in 2002, 2004, the supply and return piping were not part of that replacement. So I just, two weeks ago, changed a section of that pipe, and that is now, you know, starting to rob, whatever, you know, so...
There's some long-term ROI on that investment there.
Yeah.
What about solar? Looking at solar tunnel?
Hmm. I, I don't think, yeah. I don't think that's going to be a go. I just don't think you could put that amount of BTUs out to heat that much water consistently. But we could look at options, we could look at options, but I just don't see it as being one, but maybe.
Anything else for Dan? No?